This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Okay, it's 5:15. I'm gonna start the meeting. Welcome all. Hello?
Hi.
Hello.
So Tom, Pete is recording on first. He would like to get your roll call and spelling of names.
Just for the minutes. Uh, well, I know your name.
Okay, Cynthia Terry, T D R one.
Okay.
She's the administrator in the public safety building.
Police.
Police office manager?
Yes.
Okay.
Brenda Shoup, S H O U P, dispatch supervisor.
Sir. Uh, hello. Um.
Cynthia Tarail, C O A director.
Okay. And how do you spell Tarail?
T A R A I L.
Okay.
And behind these BJ's?
Yes.
So first up on the agenda is approving the minutes, and Tom, I have to thank you for those minutes. I was writing notes and then I looked at your minutes and says, I don't need to do notes. Right there. Thank you. Also, please keep putting them in because then I have all the information I need to remember what happened in the minutes. So I'll take a motion to approve the minutes of May 11th.
Second.
Ready for the discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Public speak. Anybody want to speak who's online? Now is the time. Okay, thank you. Uh, Mayor, do you have any communication other than what's on the agenda?
No.
Okay, then we'll go right into the agenda. I am going to skip around a little bit, do a favor to the people who only have, I'm gonna do BJ and uh, building commissioner, and I'm gonna do dispatch before I get into the major uh, oh, let me get into here. So BJ, while I'm finding your budget, you wanna say anything about your department that's interesting for this year?
Well, we have a lot of work, which is always a good thing. Lot of things going on here.
Here's your, have you looked up that yet? I can't get this any bigger than this.
Oh, and through the whole screen?
It won't.
Oh, grab the corner. Yeah, that won't do it. Up there at the corner.
Doesn't do it.
Then wanna go. Can you grab the corner and drag it?
No. I thought it was bigger last week, wasn't it? There you go. You want sidebar, right? Four sign. Can't make it fill the screen. Anything else? BJ, so this is your budget here. My associate will try to make it better. I mean, I can make the, my stuff a bit. What did you do? Well, tell me what you did.
I think he needs a better title than assistant, so just so you're not.
Yeah, you know, management has to hire good help. Uh, okay, uh, we have a lot of renovations going on. Let's get into your numbers, BJ. I saw nothing here that I have a question of. I see a minor, well, minor, we had uh, pay plan increase in salary. Um, and the clerical position is part-time. How many hours a week is that? Twenty?
The clerical position is full-time. My clerk.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
I misunderstood. Forty-one thousand, that's, that is a full-time position?
Yes.
I was looking at seventeen, and that's actuals. Forget that.
So what does P T mean?
P T.
I see. I'm assuming that permanent regular full-time and then permanent clerical P T is part-time, right?
I think that's a typo from last year.
Yeah, it probably just had.
Uh, title?
It used to be part-time position before. To keep the history in the same account, we took this account number change. It's a matter of changing the title of this.
Okay.
Wow, okay.
So this, the only other thing is this plumbing stipend, uh, if something changed from years past, that that, because I see there's nothing here in this line here.
Right, I, I spoke with the mayor because uh, both the electrical and plumbing inspectors had come to me. They hadn't gotten any change in that since like 2012, I believe.
Yeah.
Was the, is some, it was the one time. And so I, I spoke to her about, because they had both come to me about, you know, that we were far below other municipalities uh, and what other municipalities are paying out. So uh, this is still a little bit lower. I think some are getting more like sixty, sixty-five for their inspections, but I thought this was fair.
So you got a good rate increase script?
Mm-hmm.
All right, uh, I see nothing else. Counselors, anybody with questions? President Gomez? Nothing?
That's a question.
Yes.
I just, I just, I'm trying to understand. So they used to be paid, or they've been paid since 2012. I, I think.
But it hasn't, it's not in the budget. I don't understand.
I think that there was like this line where they got it, it was, it was wrong on the line how they were being paid out. I think when I first started and we were trying to sort of because they get paid for inspection.
So where would it be on the budget?
So previous years?
From previous years, right.
Before?
It, it would be um, in expenses and not personnel. So this is the same kind of strategy of we're pushing, I'm pushing all um, personnel uh, and related expenses up. Um, because we, like, there's a lot more work going on. We don't know. I mean, I don't think we ever get to the point where we need a part-time plumbing inspector or whatnot, but it's still a personnel expense. We just happen to do a guy sky pen. So I wanted to push it up so you're not seeing back um, on that line item. If you, if you look at past budgets, I can get you those amounts.
Sure. No, I was just trying to understand.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was, I couldn't really, yeah.
Okay, good.
So it just would have been in the lower half and not in the upper half?
Exactly.
Would have, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions?
I think they were both happy with this, so it was, you know.
Well, we always wanna keep the inspectors happy. All right, uh, thank you, BJ.
All right.
I'm gonna move to um, dispatch. Is that after fire? Somebody help me out here.
Thank you everyone.
Okay, do you wanna say anything about your mission statement and highlights?
Um, our call volume is very high between PD and the fire department. Um, I have one of my full-time dispatchers almost completed his training. So he'll be um, be able to work on the desk on his own. Um, other than that.
Are you short, a short, just, short staffed?
No, I'm not short-staffed. This is just a, a full-time position. I have opened that he's um, he's in the process of training. So it's, it's almost completed.
So I see a minor increase in salary, probably from pay plan.
Yeah.
And you don't have a huge overtime budget, I am assuming, because you're pretty much try to stay on schedule. Don't have to call people in.
Yes, and I also use um, my grant that's um, given through state nine-one-one. I use a lot of that for the um, overtime budget throughout the year.
I had no questions on this, so counselors?
Do you find that you're adequately staffed? I'm sorry. Do you find that you're adequate, oh, adequately staffed given the increased call volume?
Yeah, um, yes. With the full time and, and I have a part-timer. Yes, I just wanna make sure that you have the unique.
Makes sense to me?
Pardon me? Makes sense to me? Okay. Omar, anything? Anything, Mayor, or nothing? No? Okay, we're very happy for your work. Thank you, Brenda.
Thank you.
So now we'll go to the police department. Chief, you wanna say anything before we get into the details?
Um, just that we're busy. Public safety in East Hampton is growing exponentially in terms of calls, call for service. So we're super busy. And of course, we're still wrestling with the transition to the post-commission and the police reform law. We had a meeting last week with legislatures throughout Westfield Mass on this very topic. Trying to offer some solutions legislatively.
Okay. Yeah, there was quite an increase in calls for service this year.
Yeah.
What, what would you say is the, the nature of that increase in calls?
It varies, but I would say that we're responding to a significant amount of mental health calls. More so than probably ever. We have our two clinicians um, on staff, which has been very helpful for us, very helpful for Chief Norris, that they're evaluating at the scenes and not just transporting everybody to the hospital.
Right.
So that's been, that's been significant.
That's the, I'm looking at the breakdown here. That's the mental health coordinator of the.
Yes, I guess so. Yes.
I also noticed, and I was gonna ask this, and when we get to human services on the health department, there is a social worker now. Do they assist the public safety department?
Yes.
So that's even an addition?
Yep.
They're onsite or not onsite?
Um, she, uh, she's the one for the health department is located here and the one for the police department, and fire is located in public safety. And then we have a part-timer that comes um, every other day that we split on a grant with heavily police. So in essence, we have two and a half clinicians.
So the social worker for the health department helps with these calls for both of you?
Yeah, they work as a team. They do a really good job.
Actually, great improvement, I'd have to tell you.
Absolutely.
One question. Is it enough? Like, given the high, it's mostly mental health, right? I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand what's, what's the appropriate response, right? Um, and so if we're having more of that, is it too much for just two, or is, is, what's the?
I, I guess, so the answer is, it certainly depends. Uh, it's two and a half more than we, we, we had before, so significantly helpful. Uh, and the crisis calls are always increasing, uh, and the wellbeing checks are always increasing. Uh, but I, I think that we're, I think we're staffed appropriately right now.
And then, Dr. Tom's question about kind of why and like I, mental health is kind of a broad kind of question. Is it older individuals, is it people with uh, uh, like, is there something specifically in that mental health kind of understanding that's?
It's everything. I, to try to break that down in terms of uh, either age, um, it, it it's fairly possible.
Yeah.
I mean, we can break down the calls in terms of age, um, but it's people from all walks of life, uh, different age categories. And substance abuse, uh, so there's, there's a lot to it.
Yeah, 'cause I was wondering, is there something else within the city that like that if they have service, we're not fighting, right? They respond really well, right? But are there preventative things that we can do to?
Yeah.
So getting into the numbers?
Yeah.
My highlights are basically, I'm assuming we have effective bargaining agreement, which is why the salary is full-time regular is up?
Yes, sir.
It's a hundred, a little under a hundred and thirty thousand. Hundred and twenty-eight, seven thousand. Uh, we just did overtime and I noticed it's level funded again. Again, that's I, I, I think, I agree with that, the mayor's doing there to try and keep abreast of overtime as best we can.
Right.
Um, incentive is up a little bit, and I, incentive has to do with uh, the Quinn bill and things like that.
Collective bargaining, right.
Collective bargaining, that's all collective bargaining.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Uh, when we say incentive though, like, what is that actually? I know that this is collective bargaining. It's not really something that's up to, for debate, just from my own understanding though. Like, uh, what are those incentives that, that got increased in the collective bargaining?
Well, there are, the education incentive line item that the chair is referring to is um, associates, bachelors, and masters percentages.
Okay, so they.
That are in the, that are broken out in, within the contract.
Okay.
And if they, if they achieve one of those degrees, that'll increase their pay.
Correct.
And that's the Quinn bill, if you remember that. Quinn bill was years ago.
Right.
Uh, staffers by the state to give police incentive to educate.
And our incentives are in line. Um, they're doing them by um, um, they've changed the formula, so they're, they're, the incentives are now formulated by um, credits, that you have to obtain the degree, and then there's a mathematical formula, and it parallels the fire department's education incentive. So they're both the same.
I'm sorry, question, but I get, let's say I have a bachelor's degree and I have a master's degree. Do I get both of those incentives, or I just get the higher?
You just get the master's degree, yeah, correct.
Um, but the, the, the line item that says incentive, that is
That's education.
The education incentive.
Yeah.
And then the E M T incentive, I see also is increasing here. Is that, that's also part of the collective?
Yeah, that increased a lot because you have a lot more E M Ts.
That's correct.
You're expecting a lot more this budget year.
Yes.
Which I think is good, and I think Chief Norris would agree. The police get on duty, they could really help if they have E M T training.
Sure.
Before the paramedics arrive. And I was gonna ask this, Chief, all of your uh, personnel are paramedics now, right? Most of them?
I've got two that are completing their medic training over the next month here.
So most of them, yes. So you have E M T, then you have paramedics arriving. It's the best of both for us, as far as I'm concerned.
Absolutely.
Might save a life. Uh, I had a question on the specials. Why are we budgeting that if we can't have them? And maybe I don't understand it.
Because we still have a few that are not interested in working full-time. Um, they have full-time jobs, so they still augment some of our shifts, but nowhere near like we used to have.
But I thought you couldn't even hire anybody.
We can, as long as they do the bridge academy, and they're all, the ones that we have are doing the bridge academy.
It's the new ones you can't get, right? Okay.
After now, until July first of last year, we're no longer allowed to hire part-time police officers.
So you had some part-time police officers, and that's why you need the budget to cover them. Okay, that makes sense. All right, um, Tom?
Um, I'm gonna, the, there's, I see there's a big increase in court time. I'm assuming that this is due to the, everything, yeah.
Back to in person, yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's a good one.
Yep. That'll do it. Cool.
So if this is interesting. If it was remote and an officer was remote, they don't get paid for?
Then they could do it right on their shift.
Oh, they do it on their shift?
Right, but now that they're in person, they have to go over to court, and everybody falls on their day off. Contractually, they get uh, X amount.
Ah, makes sense now. And they can't change that. If they're the officer involved and it's their day off, they can't say, no, I'm not going to the court.
Correct.
The judge might have a problem with that.
Well, most likely.
All right, well, that makes sense. Wow, very enlightening. All right, um, everything else with uh, the counselors, uh, Counselor Gomez, do you have anything with these numbers?
I have one question. Why we have two lines of uniforms, uniforms allowance. One is twenty-two thousand, five hundred dollars, and five hundred dollars, and the other one is like, I don't know. And it's a, they're saying the difference.
So the uniform allowance? Right, so the uniform allowance, which is contractual for the officers, they, they get uh, seven hundred fifty dollars a year for their own uniform allowances. And the five thousand is separate for when um, the department has to pay for something. Um, so somebody, they spend, let's just say they spend money on their uniforms and they wind up.
And they have to be in these accounts, cannot be in the same one?
One's expenses, the other one's personal services.
Okay. Oh, one's in the contract.
Correct.
And the other one's expenses on, over and above the contract.
Right, which would be if somebody gets covered in blood and they're, and on a call, and they gotta dispose of their uniform, then the department would replace the uniform.
Ah, that might have just happened.
Yes.
Okay. Good, very good question. Counselor Gomez, anything else, Omar? Tom?
Um, I noticed that there's a new line in the item for canine expenses.
So I'm glad you brought that up.
Yeah, I missed that. Good point, Tom.
So, there we go. So we have been relying on um, essentially charity from East Hampton Animal Hospital, but the animal hospital has since changed hands from when we first um, went to them and requested uh, help. So what, what they were doing is they were paying for all of the food and all of the medical. Uh, but since they changed hands, uh, Andrew, my canine officer is telling me that they backed up quite a, backed off quite a bit on um, particularly the food, and then we're paying for supplies um, for um, medical attention. So essentially, it's, it's creating an account. Um, and Andrew did a spreadsheet for what he anticipates is gonna cost for the dog. And then the, um, then we, he actually um, is looking at getting like a, like a health insurance to, for, you know?
All right, I have that for my, yeah, it's a good idea.
So we're looking, we're looking.
I would imagine of a public safety dogs, their insurance is gonna be high because they have more risk, don't they?
No, I, I can't say one way or the other, but we're looking at it.
Does the, but, since we brought this up, does, if a dog is injured, is the veterinary services for the injury also something you have to pay for, or is that, I'm still don't have it?
It, it depends on what the injury doctor decides, yeah, and yeah, or what, yeah, in the clinic, if they decide to not charge or charge us. And what the injury is, of course.
So the total department expenses, I have it highlighted, is about three hundred, well, two hundred and sixty more, over three million. That's not excessive in my mind, but.
No, that's like three percent, essentially, with the canine.
That's expenses, uh. Okay, I have nothing else on this budget. Anybody else?
I have a couple of questions. People ask me sometimes, and I'm like, I don't know if this is, can you just give me a couple of examples of what like, public safety supplies are and what equipment is?
So public safety supplies, yeah, that's, that's, the bulk of that public safety supply line item uh, is for ammunition, for training. Uh, we would also replace uh, like OC canisters, batteries, uh, you, you name it. Essentially, everything comes out of pretty much that pool of money, of what it goes really fast, especially at the price of ammunition right now. So it's just, it's outrageous.
Is that a shelf life, by the way?
Not necessarily, but we, you don't, we, there's such a shortage of it that when we qualify, we're mandated to qualify uh, twice a year by the state, it, it, we don't really have to, we don't have a surplus. It's on a shelf because we go through it all.
And what would an example of equipment be?
Um, same thing, well, not the same thing, but the, the equipment would then be um, it could be.
Dislazed, yeah.
Yeah, it, it, it's, this should be miscellaneous equipment that we would either have to buy or something breaks, or um, somebody um, breaks a piece of equipment that is departmental, like somebody say taser gets broken or something like that. Um, that's department, same thing firearm, if something happens to somebody, just to replace uh, pieces and parts, whatever the equipment would be.
Has the, this, thank you for bringing that up. Has body camera maintenance and things like that been added to your accounts here?
No, because currently, it's all grant-funded.
Oh, okay.
So.
Are they active, by the way?
They're, we're still, yes, they are active. We are rolling them out. Um, we're negotiating, that negotiation, we're in conversation with the union right now about a drop dead um, date for everybody, because we just literally just got um, the rest of the cameras that we're waiting for in. So some officers had them, some officers didn't. So we're kind of doing a slow rollout of them.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else from anyone? Thank you, Chief. Crossing guards. That went down. Is that because of the new school?
Yes, consolidation of the crossing guards themselves.
What's their rate per hour?
Um, minimum wage, fifteen.
Fifteen?
Yeah. Yeah, minimum wage, right. And then we contract with, so we have the animal control.
I see that under our budget, right. That's just, that's a kind, that's contracted with Westfield Animal Control. So if you have an animal, if you got a call, we had this discussion last year, and we have a dog that's out of in trouble. We get calls, the police officer goes there, and then they bring the animal control officer away from Westfield to deal with it.
Depends on what the calls. We had one today, it was just a dog running around, so we bring the dog back to the station. We, it used to be that we would either bring the dog to the animal control or they would come get it. Uh, but do you have enough social media? You have the dog at the station, take a picture of the dog, send it out, and within ten, fifteen, half an hour, usually somebody's gonna get your dog.
That's good.
I've brought dogs there, they run around the street, kill them in the car, and then they back them down there.
Really? So we don't need any of them?
Well, I do, I do wonder, like, I'm not suggesting that we like, cut it or anything, but do you, do you think we're still getting like a, because it does feel like you guys end up doing a lot of that actual work. Like, do we, do we still feel like this is like a, a, a good deal, like we're getting our money's worth for this situation?
Because a lot of the other calls aren't just the dog running around calls. They're um, you know, rabies, um, like rabid, raccoon.
The dog bit somebody.
The dog bit somebody who had a quarantine. If the owner doesn't come and get the dog, at some point in time, we can't, we do call Westfield, and then they would house the dog over, you know, a longer period of time. Um, so we, we do use them quite a bit.
Okay. Pretty much level funded, isn't it?
And we try to save money. If they come out here, it's a hundred dollars. Uh, if we run the dog out to them, if their, if their houses are open, it doesn't cost us anything. Um, so we try to keep that, try to keep that down, and fight the staffing to be able to run a dog out to um, Westfield.
Anything else for the police department? Okay, thank you, Chief. And you went to the fire department. Fire and ambulance. Lots of uh, numbers here. You always are very good with numbers, Chris.
Which one do you wanna go first?
Well, I just want you to, if there's anything you wanna say before we go over the budget.
So I think in terms of, just looking at initiatives here, yeah, looking at initiatives for next year, I think we're really focused on the fire side, looking to maintain and actually improve our community I S O rating. So with our I S O rating, that's the insurance service organization, that's an independent audit that is done across the country. It's a scale of one to ten, with one being the best. So East Hampton's currently at a five. So we've had a short-term goal over the last three years to bring that down to clear three or two to lessen the insurance uh, rates on homeowners and businesses in the community. And that looks at not only the call volume and how we respond to that for vehicles and personnel, but also our training records. And then on the E M S side, the initiative is looking at how to maintain the increased call volume. Um, you heard a lot about mental health response, wellbeing checks, and things of that nature, which you're able to respond into. And at the same time, maintaining the needed training and upkeep of equipment and services for our ambulance licensure. Again, they come in every year, independent audit, they look at our training records, our response. So those are the two initiatives on both fire and ambulance for this year.
Okay. Get into the numbers. If nobody has any questions on. So this, this is interesting to me. We have one, two, twenty-four firefighters. And one, two, one, two, three. Each of these captains are separate people.
Yes, I, I think it's good for this committee and also the public, just as a general reminder. So we have four shifts. Each shift has one captain in charge of it, along with six firefighters. So there's total of seven personnel each of the four shifts.
And the twenty-four hour shifts? And the twenty-four hour shifts?
They're covered twenty-four hours, seven day a week by those essentially twenty-eight personnel on the front line. And then for the administrative staff, we have the fire chief position, the deputy chief position, fire prevention, and then also a, uh, full-time training officer as well. And those are Monday through Fridays, um, forty-hour week positions.
Okay, very good. So, um, my highlights are basically the same as with the police department, you have a collective bargaining increase in salary, the first line.
That's reflective of their collective bargaining, yes.
And overtime, again, we're trying to keep it level funded and try to work out.
Yep.
Correct as we can. Incentive, this is educational incentive, as Connie brought up before.
That is correct, that's reflective of the, um, union's collective bargaining.
And we have people graduating up.
Yes.
Um, I see holiday pay is up a lot, but that must be collective bargaining too.
That's collective bargaining as well, as well as over the last couple of years, the change in the holidays as well as some additional federal holidays.
Okay. So my questions in fire, uh, Connie, uh, Tom, Omar, anything?
I mean, I see something that is good, but I just want to know why. I saw that on-call compensation went down for, uh, two thousand dollars.
Went down, right?
Where are you looking, sir?
On-call.
Right here, if you want to look at my, my cursor here.
Four to two.
It's in personnel, it's about the eighth line. Okay, uh, on-call compensation, that line item is reflective of the captains being on call at the time when we did not have the deputy fire chief position. The captains were on call more of the time, um, that's reflective of having the deputy chief position and not needing them as much. That's why they're not on the down.
What, what is an uniform allowance, allowance, what, what is that, and why? Because we book it every year, why do we have to book it that every year?
So the uniform allowance, there's two line items that you're looking at on their personnel services. The first one, and the amount of twenty-four thousand dollars, that's reflective of the union's contract for their annual stipends or uniforms. And then two lines below that is the other one, the city's had for years, the uniform allowance at five thousand dollars. That is the line item taken out, uh, under collective bargaining, once they complete their year probation, uh, contractually, they have to be bought, uh, class A uniforms. And then the other thing that comes out of that specific line item is when we hire new personnel, is the initial cost for their class A uniforms.
So day by day uniforms are reduced. Reversed them? How would that work?
They go to, they typically will go to, um, central uniform chicken thing, they get a slip, and then the.
And they run back.
And then, okay, yes, you do. So that's, that's how those two lines have been broken out, um, throughout my tenure even before.
Okay. Tom?
Um, I noticed that the equipment line item, uh, increased. I mean, in the grand scheme of things, it's not that substantial, but it's a big jump in percent terms, uh, what's, uh, what sort of equipment are you?
Yeah, so this year, working with the mayor and her financial team, is one of our initiatives and goals was to, um, fully fund the annual service required, uh, for the fire apparatus, when you look at under that equipment line item, that is funding the annual fire hose testing, the annual ground ladder testing, and the, uh, annual service on the aerial truck, that we have the hundred-foot platform over there.
Okay.
So where would that have come from before?
We always had to do a supplemental appropriation prior to, this is the first year, um, that we appropriated funds up from.
All right, got you, thank you.
And the dues and the memberships is something that we have to pay by NGL or?
The dues and memberships, that is both the associations that I'm a member of, as well as memberships that we have in terms of maintaining our services and requirements.
Anything else on fire from anybody? We're going to go to ambulance. Overtime has increased quite a bit. And as, just, just for the record, uh, West Hampton and how much that generally brings in, bottom line, because I know we get twenty-five thousand still as a contract, plus we get a good chunk of cash. It, it goes right to the general fund, can you go over that again?
Yeah, so again, for this committee and for the public, um, when you look at ambulance callback, that line item there, a couple of things with that. Um, first, with the West Hampton contract that you referenced a minute ago, um, that initial contract is ending, uh, this June thirtieth. Um, we were able to renew that contract effective July first, it's another three-year deal. The previous contract was for three years, twenty-five thousand dollars each year. When we, we negotiated that contract with the town, we did another three-year deal. Uh, the first year, it went up to thirty-five thousand, the second year's thirty-seven thousand five hundred, and then the third year's forty thousand dollars. In addition to that, we took ownership of a, basically a brand-new cardiac monitor of an assessed value of about thirty-five thousand dollars as part of that contract negotiations. That cardiac monitor, as part of that negotiations, is going to be put on our engine as a, just make it a paramedic engine.
Well, you mean in a private truck?
Private truck.
So is that monitor something that West Hampton had and they gave it to us?
As part of the negotiations in this deal.
Now, those are cheap.
Thirty-five thousand dollars. So.
I wanted to negotiate for me.
And then in continuation with that, um, as part of the union's contract, um, when that was signed three years ago, anytime we go to West Hampton, which is on average about a hundred times a year, um, we recall two personnel to backfill the station. And I think that's also a good point, just to kind of pause and reflect also on that area of the, of the budget. The mission of the fire department isn't just EMS, it's fire and EMS, so through that line item and recall of personnel, we are really trying to, um, get up and maintain always having a engine staff here in the city. Um, if we don't have an engine staff in the city, we take all the people out that's responding to ambulance calls. Um, I can tell you this morning, our nearest engine coming in for the fire we had this morning was fourteen minutes out. So our.
You mean in mutual aid?
Correct. So that's just, again, the most recent example I can share with all the people in the community. If we don't continue to try to maintain one engine, you're talking these fires are going to be fourteen minutes out from when another community arrives on scene, which happened this morning. And fires are doubling at least twice the size every thirty seconds. So that's kind of what collectively that line item is reflective of.
Okay, that line, I was just curious, with those hundred calls, we do also incur a positive net gain, dollars wise.
In two thousand and twenty, the city of East Hampton collected approximately seven hundred and thirteen thousand dollars in ambulance revenue. This year, based on our projections, it's going to be close to one point four million. So that money comes from ambulance revenue, it comes from the West Hampton contract, and it also comes from reimbursement for Medicare Medicaid. They know when we transport people who are Medicare Medicaid, what we bill the insurance companies isn't what we're going to collect. So every fall, we're able to basically provide some additional data, they run their calculations. And this year, we're supposed, we're slated to collect it in June, from what they're telling us, uh, we should get an additional hundred and forty thousand dollars this year.
Can you talk about from West Hampton?
From Medicare Medicaid.
Medicare Medicaid.
So when I talk about the collections collectively for EMS, I talk about three pots of money. The ones from the ambulance transports, the one from Medicare Medicaid, and then the invoice from the West Hampton contract. So that, those three pots of money for this fiscal year should come close to one point four million.
And that more than covers overtime costs.
It covers a lot more than overtime costs.
I just asked about it all the time, and it brings a lot more money in than it costs, basically.
It helps offsets the operating cost.
And we're helping a local community. And we're never short an ambulance, people always ask, well, if they're all in West Hampton, what if we need more ambulances, well, we have mutual aid, we get an ambulance from North Hampton if we need it. The. We've got two out to West Hampton, and there's only one left for us.
The deal that the mayor renegotiated is very good for both communities, but particularly East Hampton. Maintaining the coverage for us, as well as maximizing the return on revenues with.
Sure. Sure. Anybody have any questions, I'll just send them to you, but I think it's a positive thing.
And I just, um, the, the two things I just want to highlight for the committee and for the public, um, when you look at miscellaneous professional technical services at twenty thousand dollars, that is, we have a company that does our third-party billing for insurance, so we have a contract with them, um, through the next year. They collect two point nine nine percent. We pay them two point nine nine percent of what we actually collect. So we started funding that at twenty thousand dollars, but just, it's kind of a, a, a good bad, the more money you collect, the more money I'll have to come back and potentially ask for.
We've done those appropriations.
Correct.
Supplementals.
And then the other one, that I just want to highlight, that we had a very good conversation about during the budget process, was EMS supplies, medical supplies. Twenty-five thousand. Um, based on the cost increase of a lot of the medical supplies, that will at least double over the fiscal year. That certainly will get us a good start going into next year.
So you'd probably anticipate another supplemental at the end of the year. Counselor Gomez, President Gomez.
I have a question, I need, I mean, what I see here is good, but I need the answer, is that in EMS incentive, um, to do, we paid two hundred and eleven thousand dollars, seven hundred and fifty-one, and twenty-three, we paid three seventy-six. And now we're supposed to only two fifty-one, it's one hundred and twenty-five thousand less. The reason is because it's on the funded, or the reason is because something that we don't know, and we have to pay less.
Yes, thank you for that, um, so when you look at the EMS incentive line item, that did go down about a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. That is, again, reflective of the collective bargaining change, where the, the EMS incentive, um, that they were getting, we actually through negotiations reduced that, so that's why that's not as hot.
So the EMS incentive, if they graduate from EMT and paramedic, or what is that? What is the incentive, is it education and everything?
It is, that they get, and they get an increased percentage if they get their paramedic. But through contract negotiations, we, we made them a higher base bet, but took away some on the EMS incentive side, that's why that number's down.
Okay. Tom?
I think I know the answer, so I just want to make sure that I get this, um, since the folks in your, uh, department, many of them are firefighters and EMTs, is the, is their base salary accounted for in the fire department section, because I'm going to the ambulance section and it's got overtime pay and EMS incentive, but I don't see, like, in the, in the section that says fire department as full-time regular, full-time supervisory, et cetera, and I don't see any, anything like that in the ambulance EMS section.
Because every member of the fire department is cross-trained.
Yes, okay, that's what I thought.
EMS, their base salaries are reflective under the full-time regular.
Okay, that's what I thought.
And you try to account for the overtime in ambulance services versus fire service. That's why you have different accounts.
Yeah, I think the city has done a good job keeping those separate, because it really is more transparent in terms of what those funds are being used for.
Connie, you have anything? Thank you for that, President Gomez, I missed that one. Very good. Uh, I think we're done with this fire department, anybody else have anything for the fire department? Okay. We're going to go to human services. Human services, first up. Anybody here from the health department? Ask. I don't remember the person's name, who's.
I mean, Brian is, uh, Brian Chaplin is the interim director, but this isn't his budget, so I can't answer questions.
Council on Aging first.
Yeah, we might as well, thank you. Okay. So we've had a couple of changes in personnel, how are we doing over there? Want to say anything before we get into the numbers?
Sure, um, let's see. Uh, the plan was to, um, implement our expanded staff this fiscal year with a full-time principal clerk, uh, moving the activity coordinator to a program management position at three-quarter times at halftime. And, um, and then an outreach worker left in the summer. So between all the hirings and transitions, we got started late in the year with expanding, uh, those, uh, expanding in those, uh, expanded personnel areas. So that's why we won't have expended the full budget this year, but we'll, we're now fully staffed. So the council on aging has grown to nine staff, including me and a custodian from DPW. So the, that's one big change, is managing about nine people. Um, and then this is also marking our first fiscal year of complete operations without an interruption by the pandemic. In person, um, just trying to think of things that weren't in the narrative.
Here's the highlights right here.
Yeah, so, uh, also not in there, um, let's see. We're promoting a no wrong door approach, now that we have a higher level of skill in our outreach, or as you would call it, social service department, so anybody can come if they need R M V passport, we don't care what it is that you need, we will help you in some way, or direct you to where you need help, instead of saying no, uh, we don't do that. Um, and then we told you that we were going to expand our center open hours, and we did, so now we're open two nights instead of one night, and we're about to come online on Saturdays with a half-day again. And we're trying to figure out the most cost-effective way of doing that. Um, and then the biggie, uh, finance-wise, is that the executive office of elder affairs is finally using the twenty-twenty census numbers with the formula for the state grant at twelve dollars per senior, we just saw an increase from about forty thousand dollars to over sixty thousand dollars in the state formula grant.
Could you start that again?
So the state formula grant, the formula being twelve dollars per senior.
For what service?
For everything a council on aging and senior center does that your city doesn't fund. Um, which I'm gonna, I'm actually preparing a handout for city council and for you folks. Um, that increased from about forty-two thousand, forty thousand, to sixty-two thousand, because they were using very old census numbers, so now they're, now they're counting closer to the number of seniors we have in East Hampton. Some cities and towns lost, our city gained. So now, um, instead of just mostly using that for salary and a few, uh, vendors, like for instruction, for activities and programs, now we actually can, um, have a fuller roster of programming, and, um, we can also use that for supplies and equipment the city doesn't cover, so, um, it'll, so basically the city covers salary, the greater portion of the salary for the council on aging, and then a little bit of mileage and a little bit of, um, building, um, repair and maintenance, there's certain other, um, I don't want to call them in-kind, but there are other council on aging expenses, especially associated with the building, and somewhat with the transportation fleet, that other, are in other departments, like IT and DPW. And actually, that is a project I want to do this upcoming year, is to quantify what that is, to show what is the full picture of what it costs to run a senior center, um, and then what are all the revenue sources that go into it, and what is all the in-kind, so we can have a fuller picture of what it really takes to run a senior center, because it's far more than the city appropriations, what we spend in the formula grant, and then what we take in, in, um, grants and fees and donations.
So the numbers reflect recent pay plan changes, including now we have a full-time director, we didn't have that. All of these position changes are reflective of what these increases are, correct?
Correct, so the, um.
So the outreach went way down, so I assume that money went someplace else in the budget.
Exactly, so. Exactly. So, um, now it will, now full-time supervisory is that program manager position that city council created and the outreach coordinator that's at grade C. Um, principal clerk is principal clerk. Clerical is the morning office aide, the rest of the clerk will stand by volunteers. And then that outreach coordinator assistant is that part-time outreach worker. Yeah.
So all these numbers just moved from Peter to pay Paul in a sense of changing the positions and their job description.
And to bring it in line with other departments, so the, the department head was not in a department head line item. So we fixed that with auditor and treasurer. Yeah.
Can you explain, maybe the mayor can, why do they have building? Well, building repair, isn't that under Greg? If there's a building that has.
There are things like buying a vacuum or.
Yeah, that's equipment.
Electrician, um, we covered a lot of expenses associated with, I'm talking over you.
Uh, no, I mean, there are just some repair, I mean, to, you need electrician to go to Greg, say we need electrician, he responds or doesn't, Cindy has the.
It's inefficient.
Yeah. I mean, a lot of these things are health and safety, so we'd rather have money in this budget for taking care of.
I mean, knowing what electricians cost, this isn't enough, but okay.
Well, I'd just like to point out that with this building, we're basically keeping costs down as much as we can. It's an endless pit that could be devoted to it. People can't hear themselves think, let alone hear what the instructors are saying. You know, because of the noise in the building and lack of assistive technology, there's so many things about the building. So we're just focused on what are the acute needs so that people can walk in the door and walk out the door safely and operate the programs.
Love it.
Yeah.
Just to clarify a thing, so, uh, BJ was here, she was talking, they were talking about, um, having to pay electrician planner out of that line item that used to not be paid very much, but is paid more now. Yeah, that's right, the building inspector. Is that the same electrician that would be used for that?
No, the, in, in building inspection, those are actually inspectors.
Oh, okay.
And we do that by stipend because it's not, we're just not big enough city or have the need to like even hire plumbing electrical, um, quarter of time.
Okay, yeah.
You know, whatnot, so.
I was just trying to make sure there was a way for us to use the same.
And then we have electricians that committed to do the work, but the, those are inspectors.
Right.
Anything else for, uh, our council on aging? President Gomez? Okay, you do a great job. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much.
You may be a senior, uh, I may find out what you actually do so that I can take advantage. So to speak. Uh, thank you.
Thank you for your support.
Um, I know Mike's here, veteran services. Do you have anything you want to bring up, Mike?
Not really. There's a couple of different budgets because we're changing the way that the department works from a district to a standalone office, which staffed for hours a week starting to. Uh, so that's why there's a couple of different line.
Right here, the new changes here.
Yeah.
And this is, uh, reflective of the fact now that we have no, for the publics, we're not connected to another community now, mayor. We're having our own veterans.
Yes.
And, but this is kind of part-time or is it? It's not full-time, it's a veteran at this position.
Um, I would prefer actually to, to mic on that. I'm looking at the salary, I mean, I, this three-quarter time?
So it's, it's twenty-five hours a week, um, is where we landed. So it's still technically a full-time, like benefited position, um, with the goal that by the end of this fiscal year, that position is at the thirty-four, thirty-five, um, four-day-a-week position that is like the standard for East Hampton. So that's, that's the goal. So right now, the plan is that, that breaks down to twenty-five hours a week. Um, going forward until, you know, that gets established and, and we look at it in the future.
So this, this line here, this is just accounting the miscellaneous professional technical services line used to be combined with the other cities. So now it moved up to being the salary of our own agent.
Yes.
Yes. So the fifty-two thousand, that was the assessment, um, to East Hampton in the last fiscal year for the district's bill. Uh, so that's for their portion.
Understand. And veterans' cash benefits, they're based on the amount of veterans we actually have in our census?
Uh, no, so that line is based off of like a calculation of what we paid out over the last fiscal year and then what we expect kind of going forward. So the slight increase from FY twenty-three to twenty-four, um, is in line with the three, I believe it was three percent um, from the mayor's guidance. I think that we're going to be well within that number, um, going forward. We've transitioned a good number of veterans, um, not completely off of one fifteen, but into like non-service connected VA pension. Um, we've really ramped up a lot of VA claims work, so kind of switching a city dollar for a federal dollar because one fifteen is a dollar-for-dollar program here in the state of Massachusetts, so, um.
Where do we get fifty percent from that?
We get seventy-five back, um, as long as, as everything's processed properly through the state. Um, there are a few items that, that come in at either a hundred percent. Um, so that's, that's where it falls in. So normally about ninety-nine percent of the time, it's a seventy-five percent reimbursement.
Very good. Okay. Anybody has any questions on veteran services? Thank you for your work, Michael. I assume July one?
Thank you.
Am I, am I correct that you're no longer working for us?
Yes, July one, um, and just so that, that the people watching, we've already hired, um, there will be no gap in services. We have onboarding, um, the new director this week. Um, and there's some other things moving that we'll talk about at city council this week um, to make sure that the transition is absolutely seamless for East Hampton. Um, so no hiccup in services, none of that, just another day chugging along.
Well, that's good. I was kind of wondering about that. Thank you. That's good to hear. Okay, anything else on veterans? All right, thank you, Mike.
All right, have a good night.
We'll go back up to the health department. Mayor, do you want to step in for this budget? Um, I'm a little confused as to where we are with personnel here. So we have a.
We have the board.
I know we have the board, but public health director is.
Is vacant and we're actively interviewing.
Okay, that's why. And then we have the health inspector is.
Is, um, currently is still with us and also doing, uh, getting a stipend to be the director and then, and then, you know, until we get somebody onboard.
Okay. All right. So the budget. This is, this is the great thing. I like to see the community, I refer, reference this with the police department, the community social worker. You want to detail what you hold from that?
Yeah, I mean, the community social worker is onboard and I, you know, am comfortable in saying she has an active caseload, but, um, she's also working with a lot of groups like Western Mass, um, uh, homeless centers and network group and whatnot, and really sing out, supporting the schools, what the role should be with the public nurse and the director before she left. Um, I think that next year's budget and reports go here throughout the year. You'll see really more strategic planning around what the department is, is doing, what the focus of the work is, the collaborative partnerships. Um, are they have, we're looking towards, um, and something has already come back up, like, you know, with community social worker and our nurse both have a lot of experience with harm reduction and, and reacting to, um, substance abuse disorder. And we're definitely looking at the opioid lawsuit money to, to add either services and/or staff. We're not sure what will be available with grants from the state account, but, um, the positions will be the same, but we'll have a better handle on how it's best drawn efficiencies. Um, and again, like, we, we as a city don't want to be providing the services that another agency can, is doing. And alternatively, there are agencies in the city like CHD and River Valley who want to make sure and, and ask there's no gap in service.
It's kind of, in my mind, a bridge between the initial contact and where that case needs to go.
And, and it's a little trickier in Hampshire County because we don't have a DTA office yet. We don't have a DCF office. Um, you know, there are no output, uh, well, DMH kind of, um, as, does have one in North Hampton, but it's a stretch. It, to reach these departments, state departments, you need to have a car or you need to spend a day, like, getting up at whatever time you have to on a bus, transferring, well, no, to North Hampton, I mean, to go to Holyoke.
You're talking about an individual that might need that help. Okay, I thought you meant that.
So when you say bridge, more likely the bridge would be the community social worker would bridge the services, but we need to go one or two steps by that, like, maybe put together, um, a virtual meeting with a caseworker or intake worker at one of those agencies. Um, so, because nothing is in our county. We're the only county in the state that doesn't have DTA or DCF offices.
Wow, really?
Yeah.
That's unfortunate.
Yeah, and they're up in Greenfield. And I mean, I guess you could go to Holyoke, but it's not their catchment area. They're going to refer you to Greenfield office, which has Franklin and Hampshire. We don't have a career office, mass hire.
Yeah, that's true.
Um, you alluded to schools. Does a social worker help schools?
At this time, they do.
Is that because they don't have the staff or because that's what you wanted them to do or?
No, I didn't want them to do that. Um, you know, it's a community social worker and we have three hundred kids who are in, eligible to go to our schools that are in the community, but the current need, um, and, you know, it's just that they're switching up there and, um, I think that also has to do with where we are with services and everybody is working their tails off in that department, but the strategic plan of where we're going with these departments, I mean, with these positions in the department overall is still unknown. We're still, um, assessing it, yeah.
I see you, uh, we approved that position with part of the get description, working with the school. Okay. Don't require me to remember that, but I'm sorry. I didn't.
Yes, and, and I mean, to the president's point, um, yes, it involved that, but it in an ancillary way. And, and it's more than that because there's more need.
Well, yeah, I mean, a department on its own should have its own social worker. And Utopia should have their own department to handle that. Because I'm sure our community needs social worker for themselves. But, any other questions on, uh, how's that search going anywhere?
Um, we've had some really strong candidates, you know, it's about negotiating salary and, and benefits and schedules. Um, but we feel that the position will be filled. Um, and I think also we're seeing folks who applied for positions in schools across like Western Mass, whether they got them or not, or they want them, they're, they're expanding their search. Um, because we, we got a good batch the first time around and, and the second batch was equally strong, but a little different.
Sure. Anything else on this stuff?
So I mean, this is, what's the increase in professional services?
Looks like it went from six hundred to thirty-eight hundred. Those are different, that could be testing or services, or, I mean, testing services or working with North Hampton. Um, if we don't have a specialist or we need somebody to cover like the inspections. So Brian does the inspections. He is the only person who does the inspections. He has to take a vacation. We, yeah, we have.
We have to hire someone to do the.
Yeah, and vacations, I mean, the same with the public nurse. You know, we probably wouldn't hire somebody for a whole hard, hard time, but we need to hire coverage.
That's right. Anything else, anybody? Thank you. I think that covers this evening's work. All set, everybody?
Yes.
Next meeting is next Monday, five fifteen. We have education, debt and interest and unclassified assurances. Um, I'll take the margin to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Recordings are being stopped.
This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.